Madam Speaker, good morning colleagues. Imita 36, Naliessa Tern Guahan is called to order. For our prayer today, I call upon Senator Tai Tukui to please lead us. Please rise.
Gininitata lehiniya ni spiritu santo, amen. Lord, we come before you humbled always by the privilege of working on behalf of our families and community of Guam, particularly at a defining moment in our history. We come before you imperfect, but determined as a public servant to use our experts, our talents, energy, and limited time in public office to help create a more hopeful future for all who call Guam home. Lord, we seek your guidance, your protection, your support in the work we do, in the deliberations we engage with in this hall, and in the decisions we make as policies that will affect families across our island. Lord, may the work we do and the proposals we put forward always be centered on improving the lives of all Guamanians, especially the sick, our manamku, those challenged with financial and economic hardship, and the abandoned, forgotten, and ignored, especially those who are counting on each of us here to represent their pain, their fears, their struggles, their hopes for a better tomorrow. We pray for those physically, emotionally, and financially health have been adversely impacted by the pandemic, and we pray that they will find healing comfort and true peace. Together, with an unshakable faith and trust in you, we conclude our petitions with the Serenity Prayer. "God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." Lord, we are confident because of your love and mercy that this prayer is more than an arrangement of words. Our prayer reveals our hearts, our intentions, and the hope we share that love will always triumph over hate, gratitude over unkindness, and good over evil. Gininitata lehiniya ni spiritu santo, amen.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Imeladzan Mastakilu Nasacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imeladzan Mastakilu Nasacrifisu, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. In recognition of a recipient of Imeladzan Mastakilu Nasacrifisu, on behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor sonar technician Petty Officer Second Class Jose Chargalov Santos and the family of sonar technician Petty Officer Second Class Jose Chargalov Santos for making the ultimate sacrifice in the service and defense of our island and our country.
For the recitation of Inifresi, would Senator Jose Terlahi kindly lead us?
This is about him, Madam Speaker. Gininita mastakilu, gihinasoku. Imastakilum gikurasonu. Zan imasfiguna ninasinahu, ufresin maisesu. Para ipurtehi zan urifendi, ihinengi ikutura ilingwahi iari. Ihanum zan itano tormoro. Nihirinshaku, diretsuginazu stata. Esti ufresi. Ufimma gihilo ibitbla, zan ibandirahu banderangguahan.
Would Senator Shelton kindly lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn, and Senator Joe San Augustine in the singing of the National Anthem?
(Singing) Panyo itamoru, burita nohta. Kantana tu na nyagi tolu iluka. Para ionra, para igloria. Abiba isla senpara. Para ionra, para igloria. Abiba isla senpara. To dui tempo i pas, para hita. Zan ginilangina bendishon. Kontra pili gru, nafan safulam. Zeus protect is land Guam. Kontra pili gru, nafan safulam. Zeus protect is land Guam.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so deathly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, as the stars spangled, man, in a way, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duennius. Senator Moylan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rogel. Senator San Augustine. Senator Shelton. Senator Tai Tukui. Senator Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sajus Masi, Madam Clerk. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, buenas. I move to approve the legislative journals dated May 21, 2021, and June 21, 2021, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the legislative journals dated May 21 and June 21, are there any objections? Hearing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga Hagan Guahan, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that messages from Imaga Hagan Guahan be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports for select committees.
Thank you.
And I move that bills introduced, Bills Number 140-36 LS through 148-36 LS and 149-36 COR through 157-36 COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution Numbers 93-36 LS through 110-36 LS and 111-36 COR through 114-36 COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On the motion as to the first reading of the bills and resolutions, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now in motions. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, and I move to excuse senators not present for today's legislative session.
On the motion to excuse senators not present, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of the legislative session be considered, first read, and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions, are there any other motions? We'll go to legislative concurrence. I will recognize Senator San Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government, Operation, Appropriation, and Housing, the nomination of Edith C. Panglinen to serve as President of the Guam Housing Corporation, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. There are no items under consent calendar, we are under second reading file. First bill is Bill Number 93-36. Senator Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Do you need a recess? Are we ready? Okay. Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, you are recognized on Bill Number 93-36 LS.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Madam Speaker, I move that 93-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, is introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and Senator James C. Moylan, which is an act to repeal Sections 29168 and 29169 of Chapter 29, Chapter 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to eliminating the requirement that any deed or instrument conveying registered land in trust upon condition or upon limitations contain the words "with power of sale" in order to empower the trustee or transferee of such registered land to deal with the same without court order to the third reading, and if I can discuss it, Madam Speaker?
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, the intent of Bill 93-36 is simple. If the words "with power of sale" are not included in a deed conveying property that is subject to a trust, the trustees are now required to go to court should they want to sell their property. As a lawyer, Madam Speaker, you know all too well that our court system has many priorities to deal with when it comes to upholding the rules of law in our community, and we should not further inundate them with miniscule administrative matters. The purpose, Madam Speaker, of Bill 93-36 is to allow the words of a trust to govern the power of trustees to deal with the land held in the trust. When mom or dad create a trust to deal with their property and to direct its use after their death, that trust should be honored and respected as written. Under the sections that would be repealed if that deed contains the words "with power of sale," the trustee has the power to sell the property, and the buyer is not required to examine the actual trust document to confirm that was mom and dad's intent. If the deed for any reason does not contain the words "with power of sale," the trustee does not have the power to sell the property and must go to, must take, and go to the time and expense of obtaining a court order to do so, even if the language of the trust specifically allows the trustee to sell the property. I may have worked, Madam Speaker, the Public Defender's Office for over a decade, but I'm not a lawyer, so simply put, this bill has nothing to do with wills or probates. When mom or dad create a trust to deal with their property and to direct its use after their death, that trust should be honored and respected as written. The two sections of law considered here allow for the property to be either sold or mortgaged or not sold or mortgaged, regardless of what is written in the trust by mom and dad. When I first looked into this matter, I had to look at a practical example to understand this proposal. As hard as it is when you lose a loved one, inheriting from them now makes you responsible for taxes, fees, et cetera. So if someone inherited their parents' property through a trust, they could now use these properties to come up with the money so that they can fulfill their obligations. By holding them hostage to the court system, this would only cost more money and ultimately put the person in greater debt. And Madam Speaker, I would be remiss if I didn't share with you that I had several calls, more than several calls, asking the status of this bill because they have cases that they need to work with, and their clients are asking, do they have to go through that process when they know what the intent is? So this bill would rectify and help that out, and I'm hoping that my colleagues would consider this bill as a resolution so that they can follow through on the intent as provided by their loved ones. So, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I hope my colleagues help me rise in support of this measure. Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sajus Masi, Vice Speaker. On Bill Number 93-36, Legislative Secretary Shelton, you are recognized.
Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker, and I do rise in support of Bill Number 93. As legislators, we must ensure that financial and legal processes are as straightforward and efficient as possible for the general public. Our community relies on this legislative body to protect these systems and provide a fair and equitable environment for all parties involved. Bill 93 removes a particular stipulation in the law that requires property deeds to include the language "with power of sale," else the beneficiaries of a trust must secure a court order to sell the property. As I understand it, individuals must explicitly state their intent when creating a trust, and requiring this language to be included in property deeds is redundant. Failure to include this unnecessary detail results in additional time and money spent on legal actions on the part of the trustees and a waste of critical resources within the judicial system. Furthermore, if the authors of the property deeds have passed on and the language "with power of sale" was not included, the authority of a trust must be certified by the court. This places an excessive burden on the trustees and beneficiaries of a trust and could potentially result in the disqualification of properties from moving forward with financing. Madam Speaker, I believe Bill 93 is an equitable solution to all parties involved, conserving critical judicial resources and allowing individuals to conduct swift transactions with their properties without additional stress while respecting the wishes of the trust. Sajus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sajus Masi, Legislative Secretary Shelton. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill? Senator Tai Tukui, you are recognized on the bill.
Good morning to my colleagues, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 93-36. I attended the public hearing for this bill with great concern. I have no objections with the intent of this legislation at all. I mean, I think it was mentioned during the public hearing that this type of law is not used in other states and territories. I don't know which one there were, but it's not a normal procedure when creating trusts, that the power of sale be incorporated in there. But it was ironic that during the public hearing, that some of the industry people in the real estate industry didn't realize that this law existed. And for the listening audience, this law has been in existence since the '60s, since the Guam Code annotated was first written, that the power of sale must be placed in a deed, the words "power of sale" be placed in a deed when deeded over to a trust. Now whether the individuals are not aware of this law, I'm sure that when they meet with attorneys or title companies, these individuals who receive, you know, put out a service and receive compensation in return should know the law. You know, Madam Speaker, it's right that land on this island is very, very precious and very, very, very limited. Look at our neighbors in Saipan, you know, to ensure that property stays within the family, that property stays within those people from Saipan. There are laws that they create for that, the protection of property. So that brings me to the point where if an individual's intentions were to not to have this land that's been in their family for generations to be sold, but the intention of to have this land stay within the families for their generations, the next generations, and generations after that, because like we said, land is very precious. And many times, when a trust has been put into place, those who are creating the trust are well aware of this law, that they do not want the property to be sold, that it stays in the family. So Madam Speaker, moving forward though, talking about today, if this bill should pass, and an individual is putting a trust together and doesn't put in "power of sale" and writes into his or her intentions of the trust and how the trust is to be utilized, it's very simple. There's nothing hidden, no agenda hidden or anything like that. It's a very simple law, people can put their trust together. I know my father has put his trust together. He did it himself, he said. But he didn't know about this law. And I explained to him about if this were to not pass, then he would have to incorporate power of sale if he intends for his daughters to sell the property. And I asked him, I said, "Well, how do you feel about this law today, Dad? If this law were to pass and you don't need the power of sale in the deed?" He said, "It would be a good thing." Because many people don't know about this, this particular law, and it puts them in a predicament. But what about those who knew about this and intentionally put no power of sale to keep this land for their children and their children's children? Like I mentioned, I have no problem with this bill moving forward. My concern, Madam Speaker, is if this affects all those trusts that already have been in place. And so I'd like to ask the question to the author of the bill if she should yield.
Please state the question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So my question is, if this bill were to pass, would this affect all those trusts that have been put in place by people who've passed away, who are not here to justify their actions, who passed away? Would that affect that trust if they don't have power of sale in there to sell the property, to allow them now for that family to sell the property if it didn't have power of sale?
Would the sponsor yield to this question?
Madam Speaker, if I may, I would think that this bill, if this bill as written is proactively and not retroactively. And if you allow me a couple of minutes just to confirm that, I understand that attorney Richard Johnson has shared his response, and I just want to be able to pull it out to make sure, but the way I'm looking at it, it is not retroactively, it's moving forward.
All right. Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you.
And thank you.
We're in the House of Representatives. I'm going to take a moment to introduce myself.